Gotta turn that down.
Oh, that's my phone. Oh, there we go. We're ready. Turn down the volume. Okay, so I'd like to call to order the Merrimack School District SAU 26 School Board Meeting for April 18th, 2022. Could we all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so the next point of order will be the school board reorganization. And we're going to open up the nominations. A person can nominate themselves. The nomination does not need a second. However, if someone wants to show their support, that's okay. And people can speak on the behalf of who they nominate. So we're going to start for the chairman of this year.
I nominate Lori Rothaus to be the chair. She served as the vice chair last year. Her experience as a principal, as an administrator, and a member of this board more than qualify her to serve as the chair.
That's okay. Yeah, you gotta turn it on, Ken.
Thank you. I second.
So I'm looking for any other nominations. Seeing none, we're gonna call the question. Since there's one nomination, we can do it in just a straight vote. So all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, five zero zeros. Thank you. Thank you very much. Now, we're gonna be opening up the vice chair nominations to any member. And I'm going to nominate Lori Peters. I'm going to offer, open the floor for other nominations. Seeing none, we're going to take a vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, five zero zero. I do wanna start this meeting by saying that, as everyone knows, I am profoundly deaf. And I've been struggling with being deaf for, since September 11th. On Monday, I am going to be going to Mass General Hospital to have a cochlear implant. And in the meantime, to make these meetings run efficiently, I'm going to ask Lori Peters to run the meetings. And in my absence, Jenna be the vice chair during that time that I'm away so that everything stays on track. I'm going to move down just because I think it's better to look. You don't have to look both ways, and it doesn't bother me. Okay, so I'm gonna move down one seat, and Lori's gonna continue to run the meetings.
That's Jenna's, that's Jenna's name tag.
That's Lori. We got the wrong, alright, you got it. You gotta go this way. Here's the gavel.
Which I would never use.
I hope that works for everyone, but the best we can do. Okay, I hope that works for everyone.
Alright, moving on to next agenda item. Every board member repeats our code of ethics. This is the way in which we conduct ourselves in and out of public and non-public meetings. I'd like all of us to read this together. And then our new members, which I want to welcome Ken Martin and Naomi Halter as we have our two new board members sworn in tonight. But we will read this out loud together. And then the two of you will sign it and turn it into Lori at the end of our meeting tonight. So it should be in your packet, is a Merrimack School Board Code of Ethics.
Looking. Here it is.
Alright, here we begin. As a member of the Merrimack School Board, I shall promote the best interests of the district by adhering to the following ethical standards and affix my signature to the same. Trustworthy and responsibilities. I will always remember that my first and greatest concern will be the educational welfare of the students in the Merrimack School District. I will be accountable to the public by accurately representing district policies, programs, priorities, and progress. I will be responsive to the community by seeking its involvement in district affairs and by communicating its priorities and concerns. I will work to ensure prudent and accountable use of district resources and never lose sight of the fiscal responsibility owed to the taxpayers of the district. I will make no personal promise or take private action that may compromise my performance or my responsibilities or those of my fellow board members. I will avoid being placed in a position of conflict of interest and refrain from using my board position for personal or partisan gain. Honor and conduct. I will be honest, fair, just, and impartial in all my decisions and actions. I will encourage and respect open dialogue and listen with an open mind while working for consensus. I will respect the majority decision as the decision of the board. Integrity of character. I will consistently uphold all applicable laws, rules, policies, and district procedures. I will not disclose information that is confidential by law or that will undermine the district. Commitment to service. I will focus my attention on fulfilling the board's responsibilities of goal-setting, policymaking, and evaluation. I will diligently prepare for and attend board meetings. I will avoid personal involvement in activities the board has delegated to the superintendent. I will inform myself about relative educational issues. Thank you again and welcome to the board. Now, we'll move on to public participation. Anyone who would like to speak, please state your name and address for the record. Come to the microphone. If you are a student here, just state your name and that you are a student. There's no need to state your address. At the last meeting, it was the last meeting for public participation by email. But I want to encourage everyone who's watching on Merrimack TV or tomorrow on YouTube that your emails are read by the board and your voice is heard, even though it may not be read into the record tonight. So do we have any public participation? Seeing none, we will move on to recognitions.
We have no recognitions tonight, but we will in an upcoming meeting because I do wanna recognize the Merrimack High School robotics team. And I'll be speaking to that in just a moment.
Alright, informational updates, superintendent update.
I wanna congratulate, actually, this event took place a few weeks ago. And that was an outstanding production of Peter Pan at the middle school. I wanna congratulate all the students and staff who were involved with that production. Strong audience attendance, and they did an outstanding job. Similarly, I wanna congratulate the students at the high school for their recent production of Once Upon a Mattress that was very well received by the attendees and under the direction of Matt McGinnis, who was a music teacher at Thornton's Ferry. And once again, congratulating the high school robotics team. They have received an offer to attend the first world robotics competition in Houston, Texas, coming up very, very soon. To put this in perspective, across the nation, there are about 12,600 public school systems in America. Only 450 teams from around the entire world. And the US will be competing in the national event in Houston. It's the premier event for robotics, even if you just are invited. And the team this year has performed beyond anyone's expectations. They've done an absolutely superb job at every, every step of the development and competition. We have 14 students going to Houston along with five mentors and their advisor, Matthew Gage, who is an associate professor of chemistry at UMass Lowell. He has children in the Merrimack School District. So I wanna thank Matthew for his strong leadership of the robotics team and the outstanding members of the team for their, for their great, great accomplishment. Very, very proud of them, and I look forward to presenting them with a certificate at an upcoming public meeting here because I want them to be adequately recognized. I wanna wish everyone a great vacation week next week. It's been long in coming this time of year. You can see in people's eyes and on people's faces, everyone's tired about this time of year. But when we come back from April vacation, we'll be in the home stretch. And it's been, it's actually been a very, very fast year. I have met with the administrators also about the last day of school because parents are increasingly asking, staffers increasingly asking about that. We've done a calculation of instructional hours. As you know, the state requires 180 days or, you know, the minimum of 990 hours, upper grade levels, 945 at the elementary level. We meet those requirements. So our last day of school will continue to be June 21st, Tuesday, June 21st. I anticipate that will be a half day of school. And teachers will spend that afternoon getting things ready for checkout with their administrator. And that will be followed to fulfill contracts by some professional development that Kim and the Professional Development Committee and our leadership team are working on at the present time. So June 21st.
Does anyone have any comments?
Just to clarify again, that June 21st is for the students. Staff have a couple more days beyond that to fulfill their contract.
I'd just like to say one thing about the robotics team. I think it's a great opportunity for our students. And I just wanna say, you know, getting chosen with very little time to raise money to go, because there's expenses, you know, for travel and all those things. The community has really stepped up behind the robotics team. It's been a pleasure to see how much the community has come behind them to, huh, to travel to Houston. So very excited to see the results of that.
Proud community and very proud of our students.
Alright, Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum update.
Thank you very much. We are in a very rapid pace right now. The last meeting, I showed you the EduPlanet 21 product. And we now have social studies and health being, updating the curriculum, rewriting the curriculum. And that's just going rapidly and wonderfully. And we're going to, next month, have science curriculum revised, adding the next-gen standards and using, getting that up onto the platform as well. Our visioning task force met last week, and we had a great session. We have finished the research phase. As you know, we set aside three dates for research, and then we're going to move into action, and then we're gonna move into final product. Having a lot of fun with that. And again, we have student representation, parents, community, a member from the Rotary, a member from Riviera College, a member from the YMCA. And we're going to be putting a survey to parents up on the websites that they can link to if they'd like to answer the interview questions that we've put forth to find out what it is that you would see, what are the skills, qualities, nature of a vision of a learner, pre-K through 12. And that, those surveys are getting compiled, the results of them are getting compiled. And we're using that information to help drive the work that we're doing. So that was a lot of fun. We also met as a district-wide Universal Design for Learning, UDL, team this last week. And we did a really deep, deep data dive to look at what our data has shown, the progressions of data that we've collected over the last three years. And that's really moving forward in a really wonderful pace.
Any comments or questions from board members? I wanna say I saw pictures of the meeting of the community and the people who worked together on the vision of a graduate. And that looked like a lot of really great collaboration. Alright, Assistant Superintendent of Business update.
Yep, thank you. I would be remiss if I did not thank the voters of Merrimack for passing the operating budget, for passing the two teacher contracts, which is huge in our efforts to try and hire and attract top-level staff in this district, for passing the Thornton's Ferry roof project, which was critical that we do. In fact, you know, we prebid that before the vote, and we were just waiting on the vote in order to sign the contracts. You recall, we dropped the price down $200,000 right before the deliberative session because of that bidding aspect. And right now, we're receiving the insulation on the site as it is right now. So that'll be queued up, ready for the end of school. So Bill's gonna get them out the 22nd, and we're gonna just start in right away because it's gonna be, it's gonna take all summer long to do that project. And so I just wanna say thank you to the community of Merrimack. Your continued support of the school district is really inspiring to me. And I've been here 22 years, and I just, I just wanna say thank you. That's it.
Any comments or questions? Alright, school board update. Lori, do we have a school board update?
No, I just wanna welcome the new members of the board. I think it's, you know, it's always a hard process going through elections and putting yourself out there. And so congratulations, and I'm really excited to, you know, to have a goals meeting and to move forward. It's very exciting.
Any comments or thoughts?
Excited to be here.
We're glad to have you. Assistant Representative update.
I just have a quick update that prom is approved to be held on May 13th, and students have already bought their tickets. So that's mainly an update for the parents. It's on Friday, the 13th. Kind of scary, crossing my fingers, nothing happens. But then Senior Week was also announced. Senior Week starts the week of June 13th, and tickets are going on sale May 2nd to May 6th. That's it.
Thank you. Alright, we have no old business on our agenda tonight, so we will move on to new business. Requests from the US Department of Education for Reed's Ferry Elementary School to participate in an early childhood longitudinal study. Superintendent Olson.
Yes, and bringing this to you because we have a policy that indicates that any non-academic surveys need your approval. This is a survey that has been done for, I believe, over 20 years by the US Department of Education through the National Center for Educational Statistics. Schools and school districts and schools within those are randomly selected. And the Reed's Ferry School has been selected for a field test study in the fall of 2022. So it's the beginning of the upcoming school year. I really, I don't see any downside to this, and so I'm gonna recommend that we proceed with that.
Do the members have any questions or comments? I just have one comment. I know we do a really good job of getting parental permissions and those kinds of things. I wanna just make it clear that we don't do surveys without the parental involvement. And the administration does an excellent job of making sure that does happen. So we won't be conducting any survey without parental permission. And I, if you have any questions about the number of organizations that recommend this survey, and I highly recommend you contact the superintendent's office because it's a very lengthy list of very varied types of organizations.
Correct.
Do I, I will entertain a motion.
Sure. Can you, yep.
I'll second. Oh, I'll make a motion to approve the early childhood longitudinal, longitudinal study.
Do I have a second?
I second. Oh, I shouldn't.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Passes five zero zero. Alright, review and approval of the document entitled General Assurances, Requirements, and Definitions for Participation in Federal Programs.
This document is, requires annual approval. And it is for any school system, any agency essentially, receiving federal grant funds often that pass through the State Department of Education. And basically is a, is a statement of assurances that we are qualified to receive such grant funds, that we are competent to spend them, that we will spend them appropriately. We will exercise our fiduciary responsibility and adhere to all statutory requirements, whether it's civil rights, environmental protection, et cetera, that the, that the country generally has, Congress has, in terms of regulatory requirements. So this is done, as I said, every year. Requires my signature and the signature of the chair of the school board. So if you vote to approve this, I will hand this to Lori to initial all of the pages and sign at one of the locations here.
Any comments or questions? I'll entertain a motion to pass this document.
Sure, aye. I move that we will approve the document entitled General Assurances, Requirements, and Definitions for Participation in Federal Programs. I second.
Alright, motion made by Jenna, seconded by Lori. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes five zero zero.
Thank you.
Alright, under other, is there any other new business?
So I just wanted to, under new business, look at the dates in June where the board could set a meeting. I, I'm hoping the meeting could be like the town council goes to Buckley's and has lunch. And the Buckley's opens up that one room for the goal-setting meeting. So we could all get together, figure out what our goals are, what is, what is our vision for, for this team. And so I know that a lot of people will be finished school in June, so I'm looking for some dates in June that we could, you know, set. And then also, just to let everyone know that if there's, we will send out the committee assignments. And if there's a committee assignment that you really want, please just let, let me know. And I'll try to honor everyone's request, your first request and your second request for committee assignments. Some committee assignments are more time-consuming than other ones. So if you have any questions on committee assignments, we'll send that out, and you can let us know. And we're gonna try to link you with the committee you wanna be on.
Lori, you're gonna send out something that says what the committees are and what the time commitment is?
Yes, what the committees are.
Because they probably have no idea like I did.
Yeah, they might not have any idea.
When I joined the board, I had no idea, and so.
Right, exactly. You have no idea until, well, that's maybe part of the thing. Like, you don't know until you do 40 hours of it.
Any comments on the new business other? Alright, moving on to policies. This is our fourth review of our Student Behavior, Conduct, Discipline, and Due Process policy.
So Lori, on the student conduct and discipline and due process, the, the old board member, she, Cindy and I spent a lot of time looking at this policy. And I, I looked at the new policy, and there are some things that I think that I would still hope to see in the policies. Some of the things that I, I think we could go deeper in is, you know, what is a Level 1 offense, what's a Level 2 offense? I understand. I talked to Bill about this, like, again, on page 2 of 12. I do, there's, there's a few pieces here that I would like to hear more about. You know, if we're going to give rewards to students, what that looks like if a student's been disciplined, but we're gonna use rewards. And then on page 4 of 12, again, at the last meeting when we talked about 4 of 12, I, you know, withdrawal of materials. I, I have some heartache if it's learning materials for the classroom, it's learning materials that they need, and we're gonna take them away. I just, again, I, I think we just need to have more information. And I, I want it in the policy that this would be kind of a last resort. You know, if they took the clay and threw it against the wall, you know, is there something we can do to get them re-engaged? But I don't want them never to be able to use clay again. And not that I think that would ever happen, but it says, you know, you're, I, I just, I worry about, you know, students being excluded, and I worry about, you know, shame. And then finally, there's, you know, again, I, I strongly believe that every parent has a right to do the chain of command. So if a student's suspended from school, the administrator gives the suspension. But I think if a parent wants to go all the way up to the chain of command, all the way to this board, that, that we need to do that. So when we meet, we're going to be talking about the student handbook. And the student handbook would be more detailed on he's our consequences, this is gonna happen. And then I think we'll be more aligned. And so I kinda think this is the cart before the horse. That's just my opinion. So I'd like to hold on this and work on this some more.
Any comment from administration?
No, we'll be glad to, to follow that process. And I know we're working on the handbooks right now, and we'll have our council review them. And we wanna make sure that whatever is in there is consistent with what's in the, in the policy.
Alright, then we will remove, we will move that to our next agenda.
Lori, may I just clarify on that handbook?
Yes.
It's a, it's a parent handbook, not a student handbook. But, you know, it does have the, so the rules of the road for parents to understand.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Alright, moving on to approval of minutes. We're looking at the March 29th, 2022, non-public minutes. I'll entertain a motion.
I motion to accept the non-public mission, minutes of March 29th, 2022.
Jenna, second? All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Abstain?
Abstain.
Okay. Passes four zero one. Approval of public minutes of April 4th, 2022?
I make a motion to accept the April 4th, 2022, public minutes.
Just a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's three. All opposed? Abstain? Three zero two. And the approval of April 11th, non-public minutes? I'll make a motion that we accept those minutes.
I second.
Seconded by Lori, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All those abstain? Three zero two. Alright, moving on to consent agenda. Educator resignations and retirements.
Thank you. We have two retirements. Wanna thank these people for their time in Merrimack. Eileen Banfield, as an English teacher from Merrimack High School, and Teresa Taylor, special education teacher at Reed's Ferry School. We have some resignations. We have Stockton McGinnis, behavior specialist at Reed's Ferry School. Lindsay Belmont, special education teacher at Merrimack Middle School. Michelle Stover, science teacher at Merrimack Middle School. Michelle Edelson, social studies teacher at Merrimack High School. Clarissa McHale, world language teacher at Merrimack Middle School. We have one administrator resignation, Michaela Champlin, assistant principal at Thornton's Ferry School. And we have one nomination, Amanda Doyle, also known as, goes by Amy Doyle, as approved nomination for Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction and Assessment. And we also have the approval of Administration of Federal Grant Funds policy.
Alright, I'll entertain, are there any comments or questions? I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda as written.
I will make a motion to accept the consent agenda as written.
Second? Jenna? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five zero zero. Thank you. Alright, other committee reports, are there any committee reports? I don't have any, Lori, Jenna? Correspondence?
Uh, yes. Ken, Naomi, and I received an email this evening from a constituent regarding...
the school board meeting tonight and restructuring.
Any other correspondence? All right, comments? Lori?
So I, I would like to thank the town of Merrimack, the citizens of Merrimack, our community for supporting our teachers in the most recent election. You know, it was really thinking outside the box. Matt did a tremendous job coming up with the numbers and the format and the language for, for for those, you know, teachers, and, and, you know, it was overwhelmingly supported. And I think that's really good information. Today, in the union leader, they were talking about critical teaching shortages in Manchester and Nashua. There's critical teaching shortages all over the state. And to move our teachers towards the middle and to recognize the work that they, they've done, I think, I hope, I hope they're happy, and I, you know, I want to continue to, to appreciate and, and show our teachers the respect that they deserve.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I'll just say real quick, just, I also appreciate the voters of Merrimack for giving me a shot here, and also for approving the contract, which is just so important, and I think really sends a message about how we feel about education here, so it's been a lot in the last couple days, but it's been really exciting, and I'm really looking forward to keep going. So thank you.
And I just have two comments. I just wanted to check in. We have talked a number of times about administrative evaluations and evaluation tool for that, and I just was curious on the progress.
Yes, we are making very good progress. Ken and I have been meeting with the committee of, from the leadership team. We have, you know, we're continuing to review drafts in five different domains. That will be accomplished before the end of this year. We're just finishing up the content, but also the process that we will follow. And so that's, it's been a very rewarding experience in working with the administrators. We want to come up with a, an instrument that brings great fidelity to the process, and we'll have that for you prior to the end of this school year.
That's wonderful. I think both that positive constructive feedback and that accountability just really brings transparency to all of our administration, and I, I really appreciate the hard work that you and your team have done in working towards that.
Well, I really want to recognize Kim in this process because she has done an extraordinary amount of work in terms of taking the document that has been worked on previously by our administrators and combining that to, to bring a very, very robust, robust instrument forward, combining that with the Massachusetts educator evaluation model for administrators, and so she has worked diligently and unendingly on that, so thank you, Kim.
Sorry, one question. So is the format going to be for the administrators' evaluation? Because we're going to, part of our job is going to be to evaluate you. Is it going to be like a self-evaluation? Is that what the tool that you're thinking about, Bill?
For, for the administrators?
For the administrators, and is it going to be a, a tool that we can use for you, or should we, you know, look for another administrative tool?
No, I think, I think you could use that for me also. You know, it'll probably bump right up to the end of the school year until we're finished, because we want to make sure we, we do a thorough job on it. But I don't see any reason why it couldn't, couldn't be used for central office administrators.
Thank you.
And my second comment slash question is, I thought the, I, I appreciate very much the statistics you brought to the last meeting as I was remote for that meeting, on the breakdown of the seniors that have, that have left. Just curious if your leadership team and the high school leadership team have had an opportunity to have conversations about developing a plan that we can track with those students? And in addition to that, where, where's our faculty qualifications in the HICE program? Just so that we kind of have an idea of how, within our district, the students are nurtured through that.
Well, I, I know that our students take the HICE at the National Adult Learning Center. And that our staff member, a staff member of the high school, transitional coordinator, Paula Albanese, does administer pre-test and does provide tutoring to the students. I know the staff and the administration are trying to work with all of those students. You know, some, some have made a definitive decision, just to drop out. But those who, you know, maybe with a little bit of coaching and coaxing will continue and take the HICE, they are pursuing that with, with those students. There are about eight or nine who we know that just will not, will not take the HICE. And, and that's something we have to, you know, accept right now. What we're looking at in the future for the 23, 24 school year is putting together and developing a very robust alternative pathways program at the high school, which we really don't have at the present time. And so we're going to, right after vacation, the vacation week, we'll establish a committee, a study committee. We're going to take a look at best practices around the country in terms of what students experience for extended learning opportunities and different pathways to obtaining high school credit towards graduation. So that's something that I think every high school in the country should possess. And we don't sufficiently at the present time, but we will in the next couple of years.
Thank you. Any comments? Jenna, you had a really wonderful thing to say about that alternative pathways. You want, okay. Well, I think she, I, I want to commend Jenna because she really made an, an outstanding observation that alternative pathways are a wonderful way of affirming each child's giftedness and directedness in their life, and that they have an opportunity regardless of what path they take to be honored for that, and so I, I really appreciate her thoughts on that.
And right on target.
Any other comments? Great, public comments on agenda items. Any comments on agenda items? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion made by Jenna? Seconded by Ken? All those in favor?
Aye.
Say aye? All right, passes 5-0-0. Thank you and good night.